It is 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order. On the agenda additions or deletions, number 16, we are going to be looking at a personnel overtime question. Aside from that, there are no other agenda amendments. The Select Board minutes from 5:02:22. Do I have motion, second to discuss?
I make a motion to discuss the minutes on the May 2 meeting.
Second.
Anything that needs to be gone over, corrected, edited, looked at? Hearing none, I'll move the question. All in favor of the Board minutes from May 2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pay orders. Currently, we're looking at $57,276.08. They will be for May 17. Do I have a motion, second to discuss?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Anything on there that we need to change? I would just note, there was a $12 addition that was put on for the registration for the truck at the paperwork, I guess finally came through on it. Any other questions or notations? Hearing none, I'll move the 57 to 76:08. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Honorable mentions. First, I'd like to thank all the residents for their participation in Greenup Day. We'd also like to thank the fire chief who volunteered to serve as fire warden until we had a new appointee. And Wayne and Deborah Kelly who donated funds to the summer rec program that can be used for scholarships. That brings us to Phil, road commissioner.
Well, it's not a lot to tell. They're out grading around and everything. They're trying to pop those down. I haven't heard anything about whether they had issues with this last rainstorm or not. I talked to Steve around noon time, they hadn't had any major issues, just little ones. But they're out, out and about. I guess Charlie's on vacation this week. I know Lori's going either next week and week after, I think it is. But overall, they're, they're just puttering along, getting things caught up, trying to get the Mooney Hill Road project finished up. And they're on West Hill Road working on that, is what I saw. I'm not sure where are they cleaning up stuff today. Set the boy to boot today, didn't they Sandy?
Yes, they did.
Couple of little things in the shop they did today. Nothing major to tell. I don't have heard of anything bad, I should say, for down there, so.
Kathy, you were going to speak with Stan Wilber?
Yeah, so I have a column to stand, but I haven't put that one in yet. I'm just waiting to get a real call again.
All righty.
Are you now, or is it a meeting?
Yes.
So, I had a little discussion with Anthony today, and he's going to be speaking with us today.
Yeah, I apologize. I know, you know, this came back last fall, so I wasn't sure, you know, I'm glad we made it through the winter with the salt shed, with the sand shed. I'm glad the roof stayed up. I think there've been some conversations, I don't know if there was a direction that you guys were thinking of going, or?
Well, I think we'd like to expand the what is there back another 50 feet.
Okay.
Same width, just go back 50 more feet, eliminate the existing salt shed that's there, so we can come in at a 90 degree parallel to what we're doing now.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, no, I mean, I wasn't sure if we're still trying to look at saving it, I don't think it's, I think it's past its useful life, definitely the roof is.
Well, yeah, we're not, we're just going to leave the original shed alone and just extend it up.
Original salt, or the?
Oh, the salt shed, yeah, that's got it. The salt shed is-
The little salt shed in the back?
That's history.
But the, um, the big sand shed?
Yeah.
Planning to keep it right now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I mean, my recommendation was at least the roof, the trusses are done, you know, the bottom cords of the trusses are all severed, probably like 80 percent of them.
They've been like that for years.
Yeah.
So, it stays up every year, just-
Okay. I mean, yeah, my recommendation was, you know, it's, it's prone to failure, but, you know, I'm just, that's just my recommendation out there would be to replace it. If you want to go back, I'm happy to discuss options for what, you know, can be done. I mean, most towns are going with the steel trusses-
Yeah.
... or the can they're stretched across.
Yeah.
I did look, we were talking about it a little bit at the building committee meeting tonight, I did look, most towns are getting grants through, federal grants through B-Trans.
Yes, yeah. I think the state has looked into that.
Yeah.
I talked to Anthony, yeah. That's the same one we're looking at for the fall, yeah, it's the same one.
Most of them are, since they're all built so close to some body of water, most of them are claiming the environmental impact.
Yeah.
Environmental mitigation, so if the roof goes, it's flowing into Otter Creek and causing an issue with the salt.
Yeah.
Now, the bigger issue to me is the sand one, which I guess probably doesn't have that same claim because it's sand.
Yeah.
But there might be other, there might be, I think there's other grants, not just environmental, so I-
There's a couple different ones, there's the Transportation Alternative Grant, and then there's one if, if your salt is leaching into a waterway, or, you know, eventually leaking in, so there's a couple different ones. And I discussed with Anthony, we're going to be working with Devon Neary from Royal National to prepare the application. I think what they're right, thinking about right now is getting a design ready to go so that when the application's out, we can, you know, we know what costs we're looking at and what design we're looking at, so.
So, I guess, is that a task that you're looking, that you would want the building committee to help spearhead, or is that, or is it handled? Or, you know, it fills on top of it, or?
Well, like I said, it's, it's sort of out of my league, it's nothing I'm going to do.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we're just, the town is looking for an inexpensive way to put in a salt shed and accommodate maybe a couple extra pieces of equipment that are left out undercover, and not undercover, and not break the bank here. Yeah, we'd like to replace all the rafters on the other shed, too, but there's a fine line there of what the grant's going to do and-
Yeah.
-what the townspeople can afford in this situation.
I wonder if they would give a grant to reinforce it at least, because I, I know it's been like that for years, and it's up, it's up by force of habit, but-
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's from a structural standpoint, those trusses are done, you know, they-
Yeah, oh yeah, I understand that, but there again, it's-
You've got, you've got now a two by six going like 30 feet, it's impressive.
It's just one of those things, it's, it's a, I think it's more of a money issue.
Yeah.
You know, if it falls down, then we're going to have to take it out and replace it, but-
Yeah.
At the moment, we're trying to set up for a salt shed to go with it, and then maybe work into that another time, try and replace it. Not if they want it, state wants to give enough money to do it all, do it all.
They'll only do it-
I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah. The only thing I might, I think I recommended in the report, is maybe putting some kind of sign on the post. I know the kids next door, I saw their toys, they play in it, and that just makes me a little nervous, maybe a sign saying "Keep Out," just to limit the town's liability. So, even if they choose to play in it, God forbid they get hurt, you know, liabilities-
Yeah, I think there's a sign that says "Keep Out, No Public Seeing," I think it says, too.
Okay. Okay, as long as there's something that-
Yeah, I know. Cover things.
Don't need it coming down. Okay, I mean, we're, I'm happy to work with Sandy on the grant. It sounds like they're trying to keep the pole barn structure and tuck the sand, salt shed behind it just for salt.
Just continue the pole barn style.
I wonder if it's possible to see sort of a comparison, like if we see a comparison of what you're proposing and a comparison of what Anthony was saying, and then if there's anything else, I'm still waiting to hear from Stan.
Okay.
So, I'll have that to offer as well, and maybe we can look at the different proposals, see what's included in them, and then be able to make a decision from that with other people.
Yes, the grant, right, looks like the max they'll do is 80 percent.
Oh, it's the 80/20.
Yeah. I know Fairhaven just did a 75 by 80, not just it, but right there, they're in for a 75 by 80 structure that's looking at like 303,000. So, then 20 percent of that's still 60,000. So-
I think Timoth is, Timoth is right around that same amount, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that makes sense to-
And are they, are they completely replacing, is that what they're doing?
Yeah.
So, they completely replace, and how did, large, did you say that structure was that they're building?
I think it was 75 by 80.
75 by 80, 75 by 80. Is approximately 300,000?
Yes. Yes, 303,000 is what they're looking at, and they're getting an 80 percent match.
They're getting the 80 match?
Yeah.
So, it's going to cost them 60, yes?
You say about 300,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 75 by 80, I'm not sure what's out there right now.
That one, I think ours is like 50 by 100, close to it.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Yeah. It's a big shed.
But you don't have the sidewall, so you lose some capacity there.
Yeah.
Right? Because most of these are just the mafia blocks and you drop the canvas on it.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know what the protocol is, should I raise my hand, or just, give a member of the public address on this, the committee on this issue?
Thank you for speaking a little louder.
Sure. Jordan Jankis, just a citizen of Wallingford, and an amateur lawyer, putting a sign on a building saying "Stay Out" while you know that it's structurally unsound does not prevent you in the case of litigation. It's the same thing if you bring your car into a parking garage and protect your valuables, if the parking attendant's not there during the day, bailor, bailment law will say that you are responsible. So, now that it's a matter of public record that this building is unsound and that children are playing near it, I think, especially a child, I don't know the age of the child, but if he's literate, that's great, but still, I don't know if that's sufficient protection to get you off the hook. God forbid this building falls down someday. I didn't get my law degree, but I have a lot of lawyer friends.
Phil, while you're here, have you had a chance to go up to Hopper Road? We got a email from Mr. Miller. Basically, I've had Sandy look, and .16 miles is covered in our ordinances, in our statutes. I think the question was why we didn't go further down there maintaining it. To best my knowledge, it's not accepted as a roadway. I was up there Sunday, and in his email here, he mentions that they're doing some gravel fill and grading up in there. I don't believe there's any way that that roadway is going to be acceptable. From looking at, they, no drainage, there's nothing going under for culverts, I mean, it just isn't acceptable.
The road would have to be put into whatever the state statute by this gentleman, I guess. I think we just went through this with somebody else a little while ago, on Bear Mountain Road, wasn't it? At the end of Bear Mountain Road, they wanted to throw, put it back into a road, and it had to be like a 20 or 22 foot road face, culverts, two foot of gravel, road base, mat, and everything. I was in there Friday with Steve, he'd never been down in there, and there's really absolutely no physical way, the way that road is now, you'd ever go down in and plow it and come back out.
No.
Unless you took a loader or grader in there. No, this, I think as far as I've ever been, however, knew that they stop at the third driveway, which is actually the first driveway on the right.
Yeah.
They turn around there, just below Dicky Kendall's son's house, and the rest of the road, I don't ever remember that being a town option, town road, or ever being down in there doing anything. So, I'm not sure where this gentleman actually lives or has land on this road. I know there's a new house down at the bottom.
The third house down there used to be basically a hunting camp.
Yes.
And the fellow was Russ, and I can't remember his last name, but I know I was down in there because he had some rifles that were stolen from the cottage. And I can say that in 30 years, I can't recall ever going beyond there. I do know there are some utility service poles and stuff down in there.
Yeah.
But even getting down into that very last house there, it's a beautiful house, and it's a great three-car garage. Oh, boy, I can't imagine trying to get in now there in the wintertime. It, to me, it strikes me as being a maintenance nightmare.
Yeah, it's something that they'd have to bring the road up to grade, or up to spec, quote, however, whatever it fell under, going from, I presume that's just a private driveway, to what the state recommends or requires now for the town, you know, having it up to grade for the town to take it over. But I think before we went in even thinking about taking it over, he'd have to go ahead, one, understand that this probably is all going to come out of his pocket or the opposing neighbors. And it's rather an expensive proposition, come up out of there with, you know, a road big enough to go down in there with town trucks, turn it around, and then the other three people that are on the road have to understand that if they do fix it up, maintain it by the town, it's a public road, they're going to have traffic in their dooryard on a steady diet. And they may not want that, because that was part of the reason, as far as I know, it was left thrown up years ago.
Do you know where Jern is on that road? J-E-R-N? Do you know that one is?
Nope.
Here's a map. If you're looking at, you're, the map, it's a zero, it's a, I wrote right down there. If you're looking at the map and you see the, is it Gawenus? G-A-W-E-N-U-S?
Yeah.
That's Miller's property, because it's the same, I looked up his property, personal ID number, it's 0320-
He's the one Kendall's, then, before we even go down in there.
That's, that's Mr. Miller's property right there, 0 through 20.
Yes. When you said that, ran down all the hill to the old Cook Road, Cook Drive, that was a long, long time ago.
What I was going to ask, do you think you can write a letter to Mr. Miller, let him know, by the, we, the .16 is the actual-
Right away? Or town maintain, yes.
Yeah, the .16 miles. They're actually going beyond that .16 to get the last driveway there. And that, without upgrades, the, it would not be up to standard. What we're looking at right now, Sandy's made a note here about sand going over to the, to the lake. We got an email tonight from Justin. He's not here tonight, but he did mail us an email. He did make the comment that if the sand we're putting down there is actually going into the lake and causing more harm, that it is good. Should we wait until we get the survey or the, a plan for what we do over there? And he also thinks that probably putting in a temporary retaining law might not be the most beneficial right now. You ladies may have a comment, I believe you were at the, at the meeting.
I agree, I'm not sure that the councilor was a canyon wall, and I'm not sure that it worked well, and I definitely do not want to see more sand, but then there is going to come to a solution, so it doesn't all go into the lake.
Are we talking about the lake right now?
No, not really.
Basically, we're still on the road stuff.
Great. When we get to the lake, I have pictures from the recent storm to show everybody, so, when we get there.
But when-
She has pictures from the recent storm.
But when Amy Peacock from, from the state came down in November, and she, and the write-up was attached to, to the email from Evan Fitzgerald, she wrote, "Continuing to add sand at the town beach simply isn't a sustainable practice because of its negative impact on Elfin Lake." I mean, we've been doing it as long as I've been in this town, it's like 38 years.
So, we're all in agreement, we're not going to add any sand?
Right. We're not, you know, we're not talking about anything, but I think this is not a good year to add more to it, as it's got to be more of a problem.
Yes.
Well, Jordan was with us at the meeting with the rec committee, and he, he understands that-
Yeah, the rec committee is in total agreement with the conservation committee on this, no sand. Even though we approved it at a prior meeting, we're not going to get it this year, so.
Are we, are we done? I just heard from Stan Wilber about the salt shed. He is in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, he'll be back June 1st. I will talk to him at that time. He has two companies that he's working with, Clear, Clearspan, yeah, and, and the second company, he has the contact information, I didn't quite catch the name, he said it in, just in his day. So, so those are the companies that he's working with, and he'll share with me the contact information on what Timoth has done and everything that Timoth has done, when he returns on June 1st.
We'll start reading that once the session's-
Great, so I will be-
We can look at this second.
I will be in contact with him before that next meeting. Is that yours?
Sorry?
What did you say when I said Clear?
Oh, Clearspan, it's just one of the more, it's one of the most common manufacturers, that's the, the metal truss with the fabric, so that's-
Gotcha.
That would be its own standalone structure with its-
And then there was a second?
Yeah, there's a lot of companies out there that kind of pop these things out.
Okay. Okay. So, I will have information at the June 6 meeting on, from Stan.
See if you can see Hector, Stan?
I think so, yeah.
He can help get quotes.
Yes, exactly.
So, he's in, I think he's a retired engineer.
Yes, he's a retired engineer.
Oh, that's working with Timoth.
Yes.
Okay.
On theirs.
And that's what he's going to share with me, the information from Timoth.
Okay, awesome, very good.
Oh, he's right there.
Right there, I'll do it. Thank you.
So, we're all good. Public comments, anybody here just-
Nelson, if we could just come back for a second-
Sure.
-to the salt shed?
Yes.
It's not in agreement, total agreement with everybody that the salt shed is about to fall down, so, just for the record. I'll leave it at that.
All righty. Public comments, anybody here just have something other than what we have on the The investment report. Julie?
Annually, I just submit this report to the select board, it shows all of our accounts, the balance as of April 30th, the interest being paid, and what type of account it is. And that sweep account balance isn't there anymore, once we paid the school, but, anybody have any questions?
That was going to be my question, what was the sweep account?
Just out of curiosity and terminology, is sweep account, is that just general?
So, that's the money, so the general account, our target balance is 75,000. Anything that's over that, you put into the sweep account that pays interest, our general account does not pay any interest.
Okay.
And then when our balance goes below the 75, it comes back out of the sweep.
No questions? Thank you, Julie. The erosion grant for Elfin, I, is there anything else we need to cover on that?
Yeah, I think so.
By all means.
Well, I was on the November visit to Elfin with Amy Peacock, who was on the, who was on the lake, she was with the state for the lakeshores, and she led, I don't know, the select board, and I'm not sure who was there, but there were quite a few people there. And she had attached a letter, which was attached to the one with Evan Fitzgerald's recent visit on May 12th. But reading her letter, she explained, and it seemed really straightforward, since like 1994, you take pictures of aerial photographs of the lake, and it doubled in size. And then recent ones show that the sand is now going out in a big plume out in the water and creating a dead zone where things can't rip, so-
I have some pictures.
So, she was, and she was really, her, her-
And that's just from, that's not even from today, that's from the storm from a couple days ago.
But besides erosion things, she, you know, she was recommending at the time that the, the size of the beach be reduced, and maybe the steep part be terraced, and it seemed really easy. They showed pictures like from Lake Raponda, where they put natural plantings in, that would stabilize the soil, and then the, whatever those things are called, coils or core.
Corer.
Cores, cores, things would dissolve away, and the plants would stabilize everything. It didn't seem like rocket science to me. It seemed really down-to-earth, and it made a lot of sense to have something like it like Raponda. Then there's other little issues like with erosion from, but-
I've got a question.
Yeah.
Something really needs to be done to this, like now, I know that we don't have any grant money or anything, but we need to start addressing this, I think, so, does the conservation committee have any suggestions?
Conservation commission doesn't have that much money.
So, to do anything is going to be all-
It was, did you read Evan's email? Did you get a copy of that?
Yes.
He was really gung-ho to have community meetings, so we could discuss with the community what we wanted to do and what they wanted. I don't, this hasn't gone before the conservation commission yet, and I don't know how people will feel about it, but it is good to get other individuals' senses of what's going on. But there's only so much we can do. We can't say, I mean, I won't say, okay, yeah, you can get more sand, that's all right, or, or, and I think the direction that Evan mentioned, I think Evan was great, and I think he could be a big help for us, once we sit down and talk to him more. He was looking at cutting the beach in half, so that the top half, all the way across, was, was growth, was growth. Whereas Amy Peacock was saying, okay, you've got to lose half the beach, and where you should put it is probably the southern end, where it is flatter, so you don't have the erosion, and put your, the bioengineering plants that will keep the water from going down, put that, you know, curve it all the way, all the way around, not necessarily behind the southern beach, because it's flatter.
I think what struck me about this was, he said, in order to get a grant, you have to know like the right words to say and cover all your bases, and so, he really covered an awful lot of bases. And this is just, this is like after meeting with the lake committee, I don't even have that, and the select board, the conservation commission, and the public up to four times, and, you know, just meeting- and you know, just meeting and seeing three different scenarios of what they could do. This is a lot of meetings, and this is just the first phase. At its twenty-two thousand dollars, this is not even the implementation. So, if we do this grant and get the twenty-two thousand dollars, this would be paying for this man's company to do all this, all these meetings with us, which would have a good result, but it wouldn't even be beginning to implement anything, because we're not at that stage. And I get it, because we're not at that stage. We don't know, we can't, you know, tell anybody what to do until we have an idea of some plans.
Well, part of the outcome from this twenty-two thousand dollars would be a final design though, and permits to begin building.
Okay.
They would give you a sixty percent design, so.
And permits?
Permits. That's my interpretation of it.
I didn't understand the permits, because, and I mentioned that, because we're not building anything, it's mostly just landscaping, you know, to do the terracing. It's not like we're putting a building, and he said, are you putting an impervious, you know, things like buildings or parking lots? And it's like, no. So, I don't, I don't know why it'd need permits, unless it's just because it's near the water.
It's mentioned as an environmental issue.
Because it's good at wetlands, which is.
Right.
Yeah.
That's vulnerable.
Mm-hmm.
Right. We dealt, we dealt with a regulation that says something like a twenty-five-foot space from the water's edge back, that you have to have a permit in.
Shoreline?
Oh.
There was a permit that we.
Yeah, this is shoreline protection laws.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The shoreline protect, whenever those came in, I thought it was taking things out, which would destabilize everything. I didn't think there would be a problem with putting plants in that would stabilize things. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Well, obviously, it's happened. If you look at Lake Raponda, they've done it there, they've done it in several places in Vermont, down to bioengineering, which is plants. And I think what we want tonight is, we don't have much more time to apply for this grant. And I think we want your approval, or preliminary approval for it, but we'd have to call a special meeting or something, because it's due on the twenty-seventh, which is, you won't be meeting.
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
Again, before that time. Or you give us a, I don't know how you would want to do it, but I think Sandy, I think I do, I think other people, Debbie and others on the Conservation Committee, want to sit down with Sandy and see if we can just pull this out. We really don't know what we need, but we know we have a figure of what he thinks is needed. I'm joking, he said to Debbie, I think we should go for twenty-six thousand instead of twenty-two, because everything's going on, so. Anyway, what we, what we need is your approval to go ahead with this.
Does the grant have a dollar limit on it?
Does it have?
Does the grant have a dollar limit?
Yeah, Sandy, what is the dollar limit on the grant?
I mean, it's, it's a large amount, because it could be design and implementation, but now we're doing just design, so.
Right. Yeah, if we go through that, we get the grant, we do all the planning with the help of Evan or whomever, and spend the money, I, I think by the time we get to the planting portion, that's going to be probably the least expensive of all. Lake Raponda, and I don't know what their size is compared to Elfin Lake, but I think they might be bigger, spent six thousand dollars to do it. But, that was to do it, to actually put it in place.
As I recall, it seems like Amy made that same comment, that putting, putting the plants in place was the cheap part of the.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. It's getting the plan that costs the money.
Yes.
Okay. What's our feeling on the board?
I really think we should try for the grant.
I agree with you, I think, I think we should try for the grant.
I think it's pointed that it needs to be done.
Yeah.
And financially, I can't see it getting done without grant money.
Unless ARPA wants to.
I think that brings us to the fact that, yes, you gotta go ahead and apply.
Okay, then we just need.
If we have to come up with a code, we'll just have to find it somewhere.
We need to know from Sandy when she wants to meet, make sure that we're all available, so maybe tomorrow?
Wednesday?
Tomorrow afternoon at two for me. I even brought my date brochure with me. I think Joe is Wednesday. I could do Tuesday afternoon. I could do Tuesday afternoon, too.
It may not be the time or the place yet to get into this, but I almost think that as far as our share of money, I would almost start talking with the ARPA people, that committee, now sooner than later.
I talked to them their first meeting, and they did, and An A. Watt has been back in touch with me several times, saying that, you know, I think we could take some of it out, some of it out of money that the town has now.
Good, good.
But I, I can go back to another ARPA meeting. Do I have to make a request for this amount?
Yeah.
So, we require Evan or whomever to do a plan. Should we still go ahead with the grant now?
Yes.
I think we should do both.
Yes.
No, just as an aside, I'm amazed at how much we're looking at that ARPA money in a number of different areas in town. We have, over the years, gotten to a point where the town is in severe need of funds. I have to say that that's been basically a godsend. Hopefully, it comes through when we need it, but at this point.
When are ARPA funds available? Are they available now?
Because ARPA committee.
About half of it is.
Okay. I mean, I was, when you said if they come through, so I was thinking, if we decided to do this and use a little ARPA funds to, I don't want to, at the last minute, be told off.
Julie can tell you better, but I believe about half of it is already been put away.
It's on this report.
So, should I call An A. Watt again tomorrow, or?
They're meeting tomorrow.
I don't think it'd hurt to keep her in touch.
Bruce is right here.
Hi, how are you? We were talking about the sand problem down at the beach.
Yes.
And, and A. Watt had called me a couple of times after I spoke with him, she said, you know, it's changed a lot, and it's possible that ARPA, she said, it's very likely that ARPA funds could be used for the planning process of this.
Under the final rules, it does qualify as a potential project. And the committee right now is putting together a set of criteria to send out to all of our citizens in Wallingford, to get their recommendations on how to use the funds. Once that comes in, and they've all been compared, it's up to us to make recommendations to the Select Board regarding what type of priorities we should set and how we should spend the money, and benefit of all of our three communities, not just one.
So, should I make an appointment to come to the meeting?
I think it'd be an excellent idea. Contact Peg Sewell or contact Ann, she's the vice chair, and ask them to tell me I can speak. I know you'd be welcome, we've talked about having guests come in before, so.
They're meeting tomorrow night, right?
We are. But we missed last month's meeting, so we're a month behind in where we were planning to be.
So, tomorrow afternoon, two o'clock, or seven?
Two? Okay, I could do it. That's probably like the only time I can do it. It's really good.
We're meeting in your office. But that still leaves open the fact that you have not really approved it.
They did.
They did?
Yes.
Oh, they did? You know, I hate this room. Absolutely, I cannot hear in this room.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, I guess, yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow, Sandy.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Wallingford Day group subcommittee.
They recommended making the subcommittee.
Yeah. The Recreation Committee, at its last meeting, approved that the Wallingford Day group become a formal part of the Recreation Committee, of the subcommittee, and through this, the end of this fiscal year twenty-three, so up until next June. There was a member that has some concern about what's the best, you know, organization long-term, and so he asked between now and next June to think about it. One item I want to just bring up, is I heard from some folks in town, that, you know, I mentioned this was going to happen, and they just want to make sure, they're afraid that if, all the funds that are in that account right now are donations, as far as my understanding, that since it becomes a part of the town organization, those funds won't be used anywhere else except on Wallingford Day. So, you know, if we can put wordage into that, you know, that it becomes a formal subcommittee of the Recreation Committee, and its funds are to be dedicated to the Wallingford Day activities. It would make a lot of citizenry much more comfortable.
So, basically, they would carry their own funds over from year to year?
Yeah. Assuming that they'll, in, this is only till the, you know, next June, the end of the fiscal year, and assuming that we go for another year under this arrangement, yes, they would just take whatever funds are in the account right now and transfer it to the next fiscal year. But the, the real concern is that if I donate to the town for this specific purpose, that in the case of some financial need, that money can't be used elsewhere. It's like restricted funds.
One of the things that happens, though, is that money has to go into the general account. It can't, it has to be a voter-approved fund, if, if it's going to be carried over from year to year to year specifically for Wallingford Day.
Yeah. All right.
This is one of the things that, why I oppose.
It's complicated.
I oppose Wallingford Day becoming a, a town committee. To me, they should be their own separate organization. It's always been something that was not a town, a town government function.
Yeah, well, our, our group figures that, you know, at this point, we're so close to the actual Wallingford Day, and we want to make sure that there's no obstacles in the way to them carrying off their fireworks and all the other events that are going to be coming up. And that, long-term, you know, it's, it's good for insurance purposes, it's good for just keeping everything straight. I think personally, as a citizen here, Wallingford Day is a great thing to market the town. You know, it brings attention to the town, many towns have town activities, I don't know how they're structured, but this seems to be an easy vehicle, and it's not costing the town anything as far as, except for Sandy's and Julie's time writing checks and keeping track of everything, but everybody's volunteering for this, so it's, you wouldn't want to quash enthusiasm amongst the citizens.
I, I think one of the problems, we just basically resolved the implications that the town would not act as a banker again, because we had a number of accounts that we were rolling over, and basically Julie has cleared that pretty much out, so that at the end of the year, the accounts actually will go back into the general fund. I think what your committee is kind of proposing here is an exact opposite of what we've just gone through a whole process to eliminate.
I, I think it was, I thought that, and I haven't seen your auditors' report, but I thought the subject was that there was no formal connection between Wallingford Day and the town. This makes it a formal connection, at least that you're, I could give, you know, I could give some cash to Sandy and say, cut me a check for a birthday party, and that wouldn't be a legitimate use, but if I'm saying, take these funds that are donated by the citizens of Wallingford and use it for Wallingford activities, you know, I don't see how you get around it, especially, I understand that the fireworks, I think, have their own insurance, so that's not an issue. But as this becomes a long-term thing, you know, if it becomes its own organization, that becomes a whole raft of issues. Who's going to manage it? Does it become a nonprofit? You know, it's putting burden on a volunteer group, and I doubt if anybody wants to come to board meetings for a nonprofit. It just, it just seems like such a simple, logical thing to do, and would satisfy the auditors' issue that funds are being paid out of the town, and the town has no formal relationship with this volunteer group. And this would make it a formal relationship.
What's your opinion, Bruce? Do you can resolve the two that, to me, we're?
I've said before, I'm not opposed to Wallingford Day, I think that's a good thing, but I really think financially, the town should stay out of it, but, I mean, I think I'm probably the one person on this board that is opposed, so.
You're not feeling alone, because I kind of, I kind of understand it myself, that the town is not a fiduciary unit, and I thought when they, when they were looking at becoming a subcommittee of the town, that they were strictly looking at doing it for basically insurance purposes. I didn't understand that we were going to get back into banking with them. Is, is that what you're looking at, too?
Yes.
I'm totally in agreement with them being a subcommittee, but I think there should also be that point where they're handling their own money, if they get donations.
How can they handle their?
A quick example of that is.
How can they handle their own money if they're not?
We have, we have the, we have the Conservation Committee, who had a nice deal set up with a local company, that one of their workers' time on the Conservation Committee was being compensated, and those compensations were in the form of a donation to that committee. Now, in my mind, obviously, it was contributed to conservation, it should have been contributed to conservation, but when we came up with what we're working out of a policy, that money at the end of the year doesn't stay with conservation, it goes to the general fund. So, to that extent, I think, money-wise, your donations and any of your funding should be a separate entity that's perhaps not even a part of the committee. Maybe you ought to be doing the banking completely on your own, without the town's involvement, with us just overseeing you as a committee for the insurance purpose.
But I think the issue becomes that somebody that gives five thousand dollars for fireworks, I would think, could take a deduction as a charitable donation. They can't do that unless there is a nonprofit entity set up, and that takes about two or three years to accomplish. And I don't know, I don't know. And I don't know, I don't know all the people on the, uh, work, you know, the, uh, Wallingford Day Committee. But that's a lot of work to have a nonprofit. I have my own nonprofit. It's a lot of reporting and all that. And it, I could see if it was a different, I could see if it was different if it was benefiting Man, Come to Manchester. You know, let's make Manchester a better town. But it's benefiting the town. It's bringing people into Sweet Birch. It's bringing them into all the stores and all the restaurants here. And it's a way of boosterism. It's helping the town, actually, you know? Maybe you could table this until more select board members are here?
Where's the money now?
Do you want to table until...
I just, there's just one question. Where is the money now? Is, do they already have their own bank account, or is it through ours?
They don't have their own bank account.
So, it is through ours already?
So, it's happening through the town.
The town accounts right now.
That's what I thought, just double-checking.
And then, I don't even know if they have a president, vice president. I don't know if they have an actual structure like you would have in a nonprofit, you know, with somebody that's...
Well, I don't think they have, Jordan, because I think it was just last year that people formed Wallingford Day again. The fire department did it for years. And then, bit by bit, interest in the community and volunteers, they dwindled away till it was like one, one or two people in the fire department trying to do it all. And they finally just got tired of it and said, "We're giving it up." And for a few years, there was nothing.
It started in 2019.
Was it?
Yeah, because they had it one year. And then, the next year, they had to cancel because of COVID. And then, they had it again last year.
So, it started back up again in 2019, then. Yeah. But for quite a few years, it, there was nothing because there was no interest, or there wasn't enough interest from people in the community.
Well...
They couldn't get enough volunteers.
Well, I think there's an interest level now to make it happen. You know, it's, as far as, it's happening in July, and...
It's well-attended.
If you cut checks this July, then you're going against your auditor's comments.
Well, the intent was that we would cut checks. The money would get all spent by July.
I don't think, it wasn't all spent last year. There's been a fund...
Oh, it wasn't. It wasn't. That's been carried over.
Right, because of last year with all the stuff.
Which shouldn't happen. If an auditor was to come in, they would question. Like I say, I'm not opposed to Wallingford Day. I think that's a nice thing. It's a good thing. But I just don't think the town should be the...
I don't think it'll happen unless it's part of the town.
Maybe we should table this for now?
So, because I...
Maybe we should table this for now?
I think so. I think Justin can probably spread a little bit of light. He's on that committee. Not that you haven't done a lot, but...
No, but I mean, you know, I know Justin's in favor of it.
I think we'd get a better view of it.
We've talked about that at break. Lucy's in favor of it.
Thank you.
Your will?
The Planning Commission of Recreation appointments. Planning Commission has recommended to appoint Lucy Thayer to Bill Brooks's post. Uh, and the note here is that she was already serving as the alternate. Sandy's question is, do you want to appoint Lucy to the three-year term, or three-year seat with the term to expire in 2025? Any discussion? No, there, no?
Make a motion to appoint her.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Recreation Committee unanimously agreed to recommend the appointment of Morgan over to the Rec Committee. Uh, Morgan has signed the mission statement document. And Sandy's question, do you want to appoint Morgan for the one-year term?
I make a motion to appoint Morgan for the one-year term.
Second, thank.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
She apologizes that she couldn't get here tonight, but she was exposed to COVID.
It's everywhere right now.
Fire warden appointment. Roger? Uh, we have a note here that Lars Lund of Ron Foreson Park had received two applications. And Roger is Lars's selectman. Sandy? He is Lars's selectman.
Yeah, Mr. Lund brought down that application.
So, we just need to appoint him? Yeah. Is there anything you'd like to say before we vote?
Uh, no, I was just gonna basically be here to, so everybody could see who I am. Let you know, you know, I mean, been working with the fire chief while he's been...
Are you with the fire department?
I am in the fire department, too, yeah. I've been on the fire department since I was 14, not in Wallingford, but I've joined as a junior member of Proctor'sville, and I've been on the fire department ever since, so.
I'm not familiar with where you live. Are you right here in town?
I live on Hockins Road. I bought the old farmhouse at the end. Two years, little over two years ago. Working on it, I think, a year up there.
Do we have a nomination already?
I just have a question. Isn't, isn't this a state appointment anyway? So, so, we really don't have any say in this, do we?
Well, Lars dropped off the appointment form for us. He's already signed it on his end, and he needs the town to, uh...
Bless it. Bless it, or whatever? Okay.
Well, I think we have to appoint him because I think we pay him.
Oh, okay.
Do we have a motion to appoint? And a second? All in favor, say aye. Your aye.
Do you want to stop by, um, later in the week?
Yeah.
I've got to sign this and stuff. If you'd be signing, you're a... I think you're a fire warden. Or you can at least have it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I come through usually around 3:00 in the afternoon every day, going up by. I'm way north of Manchester, so.
All right. Do you want to swing by tomorrow at 3:00?
I can, I can stop there.
Great. Thank you.
All right.
The sidewalk update. Probably you'll hear, oh, no, a lot more from your survey of it than I do. You do have the estimate here. This is from Devon.
Yes.
I'll actually let you guys go into a little more. I mean, he does point out that we can go for the one, the two, or both of them.
But he recommended...
And he makes a recommendation here.
He makes a recommendation that really the one that is the strongest is the water source. There's much, much reason of why that line really qualifies uh, because of the school access, because of the people who live. We've got Wallingford House. We have the apartments down the street. We have the church. There's, and also, as it's being a public access way, to be able to, um, go to other parts of town, to bring business into other parts of town by having well-functioning sidewalks. That, it's a very strong proposal. And that, um, he really feels that with us following through with the school-street portion, that, um, we have a strong, um, chance of getting this grant. Uh, this one is the 80/20 grant. Um, and that we should really, while we can go for both, if we go for one, it's not going to, it's gonna put us on the bottom of the list to get the other. So, when we're looking at it of need and value and all of those, um, conditions, the best one to go for was the school-street one. And so, we started, um, putting the grant together. You have the, um, figures there of what Devon was putting together. And we're contacting, um, different entities around town. I'm going to, um, contact Brian Hill, who is the superintendent of Mill River, to see about him writing a letter for, um, the school. Yes. In, in support. And we're contacting different organizations here on School Street to write letters of support for the project. But the more letters that come in showing that this is a valued needed project, it just all helps the grant holder.
What was the cost on the School Street? Because this says dekot.
Yeah. We had the, we had the School Street in the last one. It was around four...
Yes. Four eighty?
Yeah.
Yes.
We didn't, he hadn't asked, he hadn't provided the dekots.
About, yeah, about four eighty, three forty, eight five. We just do it somewhere around that. And that the, um, cost for us would be somewhere a little less than that.
It was interesting that the 80/20 match on School Street, our 20% match would amount to about the same.
About the same as the 50/50 match would be. It was like less than $5,000 different. So, it just, in every single fashion, doing the School Street portion, going for the School Street portion only ma, makes the best sense.
Kathy, may I put my oar in the water on this for a second?
What's that?
May I put my oar in the water on this for a second?
Yes, please.
The matching funds that would be required for that School Street project may well be eligible to be used, uh, part of the ARPA funds for that. So, it may not have to come directly out of the town's yearly budget.
Not to sound smart, but we sincerely hope so.
No, they already, they already asked the Regional Planning Commission, and they seem to think it was.
Great.
So, there we go. That's another good element for this, this project.
Great. So, we just need to approve that we want to apply for... Only the motion, we apply for the, uh, School Street grant. We have a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And we'll put the other on for now.
Thank you, everyone.
We have an application for the construction stand. Again, I don't know a young person.
Solon.
Farmer.
Solon. Solon. I would...
I, I've known Solon for a very, very long time. He's a better...
I'm assuming we have room for him over there?
Yes. Well, yeah, because the other gentleman's not ready.
Yeah, and we also have the lady. Um, all in favor of hiring Sol, Solon?
Solon.
Solon.
Aye.
Aye. He's good. Also, one of our counselors at the, uh...
He said that he, um, I can't say enough of things about Josh.
Yeah.
Ben, he's, he's really great with or, organized today.
Mm-hmm.
He's what, a high school senior?
He's a senior.
And he is just, he's organized. He plans well. He works well with others.
I mean, I, I've saw him all weekend working with little kids. And he's, they all look up to him, and he's amazing with them.
Ben, Ben loves him.
Well, I think, I think he got other job opportunities, too.
Yeah. I'm not surprised because he's...
No.
He's a find.
We'll use, I'll use him as a substitute.
Using a substitute, I think, is fantastic. And he would be responsible. He would follow through.
Yeah.
Are you going to, um, are you going to look at Lisa, whether she wants to cover, or...
She can't. She, she sent me an email, um, late this afternoon. She can't. She's just, so we're gonna need to look for Debbie Newbert.
Shouldn't we advertise for a second person?
Yeah, the camp counselor's mom.
Oh.
Oh, boy.
Oh, so she can't be a camp counselor?
So, that was the one that was working with Laurie? That was gonna be the primary, and Lisa was gonna fill in when...
Yep.
Okay.
Lisa just, uh, so we're gonna need to put that back up.
Yes. Yes, it's a, it's a...
Lisa can't do, like, well, she's not a girl, so...
Right.
If nobody's found, the camp won't go?
Yeah, we'll have to find somebody. I mean, there's gotta be teachers.
I'm sure they're, I'm sure somebody will. I'm just...
Right. Right, but that's what Lisa said. They're gonna, I think the three of them aren't gonna meet tomorrow night. Yeah, if we don't find somebody, we're gonna have to reform our council. But, I mean, we still have...
And you've already had 18 sign up? I mean, that's fantastic.
Is it filled now?
We've already cut off the third week because we've got too many kids right now.
Oh.
We got an email from the principal today saying it was full.
So, yeah. Okay. We start putting the word out.
Okay.
Transfer station personnel. Thank you again, Bruce. It's getting old, I'm sure.
He's there again today. It's a hot day to be there.
We, we hired Jerry as a temporary over there uh, when Jim was out. Have we heard anything from Jim yet, what he's looking at?
No.
I'm beginning to wonder if he's gonna be able to make a return. Some words I saw, was it Jim Bagn? No?
Yeah. I spoke with Jim, and he would be willing to...
He's interested?
Help, yeah, to, on occasion, too.
I think that would be a prudent thing to do. It can't all fall on you, Bruce.
It's fun, but I mean, at some point, those are gonna be where I can't do it either, so...
Exactly. So, I think having another substitute just makes sense.
It's fine with me. Okay.
Do you want to send it, do you want to send it hourly?
Uh, what do we put Jerry at? 13, was it?
Yeah. Jerry Reynolds. Yeah, we sent it to him.
Would he be all right without the same thing we're paying Jerry?
Hopefully. I mean, knowing Jimmy might do it for free, but I don't want to speak out of turn, so. I don't want to speak out of turn there, so.
Great. We do have an executive session down there, downstairs. Do we have any comments at the moment? Select board comments? Any rough roads that we can complain about, or...
I have one thing. Working at the transfer station there, there's a tree behind the electronics waste shed that, we're, right behind where we park both our vehicles. And today, when it got really windy there, I've been looking at this branch waving away. And I'm thinking, wow, this tree needs to either get trimmed or cut down. Or ends up on somebody's vehicle.
Okay. I'll, uh, I'll talk to Rob Barker because he was just over there, like, a month or two ago, cutting the other trees down on the other side of where you parked. So, yeah, I'll, I'll have him go check out.
I don't know, maybe it's good, strong, and solid. But the way it was waving around in the wind there today, I was getting nervous for my truck.
And, and I have one thing. Um, the, I think we talked at the last meeting that the bridge, um, across, um, uh, going to Stone Meadow, that it had been, the holes had been unplugged. They're plugged again, um...
That's a new bridge?
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm wondering if they keep getting plugged up so fast if they've been cleared. Do they need to be, like, made a little bit bigger or something?
I don't know exactly where they are, but it could be a structural issue if you drill a hole out there. I don't know.
Yeah, that's how we can...
I'm sure they planned it when they did it.
I'm just thinking if, because we just talked at the last meeting that they had just been cleared enough. Now, they're plugged again. just been cleared and now, now they're plugged again, I mean, less than two weeks, so, I don't know if it's worth just looking at.
I don't know exactly where they are, I don't pay much attention to that, so, must have been a reason for drilling small holes to start, I presume.
Okay, I, I don't know, but if they're, if there is a reason for drilling small holes, then I guess we just don't have to do that, but... They get plugged up pretty, pretty quick, that's all I'm saying. I'm sure Rob, who would love to not be going out every week to unplug things.
I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
If we have no others, I would suggest that we adjourn to downstairs for the executive session. It'll be held for a complaint on personnel matters.
We want to, we need to make a motion.
Yes, we need, we need to make a motion.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, it's in, it's in your memo, we need to cite.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Move to enter executive session is allowed under 1 VSA 31383, the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public office or employee.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.